They're pledged to gun. Attention salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and created in just one. Move the sound please. Thank you very much. Welcome, welcome to our Monday meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there's time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask our speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that our your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide a clear of all speakers and ensure meetings are recent, orderly. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide the following materials for the boards of review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time is left. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or school administrator after these adjournments. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda? Ms. McCool, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Groves?
I can't do both, yeah?
Huh?
I thought I knew.
Out Ms. McCool.
Okay, second, there you go.
And is there any, any comment? All favor aye? Aye, opposed no? It's ordered. It's time for our school board to resume again. We look forward to seeing you, everybody, come on up.
Hello, okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes. Good point. We all need to make sure, you just wave if you get to where you can here, it's very important and it's very frustrating if you can't, whoever's speaking, just wave at us, okay? Thanks Ruth.
Good evening esteemed members of the school board, teachers, staff, friends and family and anyone else who may be attendants. It is so lovely to see everyone again after the, after the time that you've not spent together, especially with the five day break that we've just had. I know that from my experience and from talking with my peers and my teachers that that was very much appreciated, but the first quarter of the school year has wrapped up, the second quarter of the school year has begun or is about to begin. And with that, here's some of the recent happenings. As for sports, our fall sports are fully underway. Football and volleyball and cross country are all going off to a very strong start. I don't have exact metrics for the win-loss ratio of each one, but I know from talking with friends who have been in all those sports that they're actually very excited about the season coming up. They think that they've already done very well and they're looking forward to that continuing over the rest of the semester for their fall sports. I don't have much to report on Leo Club, but I know that they are very active in their volunteer projects which are gearing up for the year as well as, sorry, as well as food drives, item drives for, I suppose, other organizations that they may be involved with. One thing that I think our National Artist Society and Leo Club are doing in conjunction with each other is Project Linus, which is a project to make blankets and give them to children who are in need of that. With that said, our NHS has also been very active with our year starting with our first meetings in August. We recently had, sorry, we recently had a book fair fundraiser on October 9th. And Ms. Bynum, I know that you mentioned at, maybe not the last meeting, but the one before that, that you were wondering if it's possible for our NHS to meet at different times due to the fact that yes, there are students at our Mountain Vista Junior School and the Future Educators Academy who aren't able to participate in the meetings. I addressed that and as did Ms. Cooper, our advisor, during our National Artist Society meeting in September. And unfortunately, we realized that that would not be possible due to the time that is in the school day that is set aside for instruction and the fact that after school, there's often activities like, I suppose tutoring or athletics or simply coming home that students need to do. It simply wouldn't have been feasible to do at any point. I'm so sorry, but I did want-
That's a good thing to consider.
Yeah, I did want to get back to you on that.
I had a thought, is there anybody taking notes at these meetings?
At our NHS meetings? Yes, we do, our secretary takes minutes.
Could they be published and handed to the kids that go to Mountain Vista?
Yes, they are published and given to the members at each meeting.
So at least they'll have it in writing what happened?
Yes, and they're also posted in the National Artist Society Google Classroom for people that are in need of it. And people can always ask their friends or Ms. Cooper herself, hey, do you have a copy of the minutes or the agenda for next month's meeting? I really love to see it, I missed it. We do have those resources available.
That would be helpful on this.
Mm-hmm, yeah, of course. As for our POG team, our Profile of Graduate Team, college admissions are in full swing and our POG team is busy. Just in the past week or two, we've had two field trips to colleges with the field trip to University of Virginia being October 2nd and a field trip to James Madison University following a week later on October 9th. I went on the JMU field trip and it was absolutely amazing. I've been to James Madison University multiple times. I was able to meet RCHS alum, meet people who I knew who had gone there and Ms. Capsa, Ms. Wiggins, Ms. Pond and the rest of the POG team gave us a very detailed view on, hey, this is why JMU might be good for you. If you need help with your applications, reach out to us, we're here for you. And so every student here that is involved with the POG team is very grateful for their help and this is very beneficial for our students overall. Another thing that we had with our POG team is that our 10th and 11th graders took the PSAT on October 8th. Like it may sound like, this is a practice SAT, which is not just used for getting used to the format of the SAT, but also can be used in consideration for the National Merit Scholarship. In fact, one of our students, I think about three weeks ago, Mason Comer, was recognized for his outstanding performance on the PSAT and I believe being named as a National Merit Scholar semifinalist. So these, these opportunities are being offered to our students and they're benefiting very greatly from that. In other news, our school has been very busy with the beginning of the school year. We had our math, science and I believe, English benchmarks recently, which are measures of performance for our students to make sure that they've been meeting their expectations or if not, how can the school better support them? Those happened recently with some of them on the same day as the PSAT and others on different days. Of course, we did have our five day break that everyone was super excited for, but since I've already addressed that, I'm just going to move on to our next point. Our theater is fully underway with auditions already completed for our one act play Murder Me Always, a murder mystery comedy, I believe, by Lee Miller. And rehearsals are fully, fully underway, sorry. If I'm correct, I believe performances will be in mid to late November, but as of right now, they're getting started and they're getting off to a very strong start. We also had our senior portrait makeups for the seniors who were not able to get their portraits done for their yearbook or if they, if they elected to do so, their taffing gown photos, which happened on I believe, September 26th, which was a great opportunity for the people that were unable to come in July for illness, family, travel or whatever other reason, to have an opportunity to get those absolutely priceless photos which people are going to look back on, you're like, oh wow, I'm so glad that I did that. So we had that opportunity that students were very excited for. And also, one of the biggest highlights of our past month has been our homecoming week, our homecoming game and our homecoming dance. The homecoming dance this year's, for the homecoming dance, sorry, this year's theme was Ace of Elegance, which was all basically Las Vegas casino themed. And it went on, I believe, September 27th from 7:00 PM to 10:30 PM and students absolutely had a blast. The dance itself was held, was held outside in our parking, in our parking lot in a small tent that was actually very nicely decorated. And inside, there was popcorn available to students, water and refreshments, as well as actually casino games with no real money was involved, I assure you, but real dealers, real tables and pretend chips that Ms. Pond was very, was very thankfully able to get for us that day. In addition, our junior Ms. Platt also dressed up as Elvis, which was a very nice touch to add to the occasion. Yes, that was Ms. Platt. So that is all that I really have for what's happened in the past, but now let's get to what we're looking forward to in the future. As for sports, on October 14th, so today and maybe even right now, our junior varsity and varsity volleyball teams will be playing against Central with junior varsity at 6:00 PM tonight and varsity at 7:15 PM tonight. Tomorrow, on October 15th, our varsity cross-country team will be playing against Madison County High School, at Madison County High School, at 5:30 PM. So I'm wishing them all the best of luck. On October 16th, our middle school volleyball will be playing here at home against the Ray at 4:30 PM. And junior varsity and varsity volleyball will also be playing home against the Ray at 6:00 PM and 9, sorry, at 6:00 PM and 7:15 PM respectively. October 16th is also a day where we at the school, both Rappahannock County Elementary School and Rappahannock County High School have elected to wear pink during the school day and at the game for breast cancer awareness. So that is just another thing that I'd like to add, a nice little touch there at school just to support those who may be in need of it. On October 17th, we have varsity football playing against, Kenston Forest, at Kenston Forest at 7:00 PM. And on October 18th, we have varsity and middle school cross-country playing at, sorry, playing, running, competing at Pole Green Park, Pole Green Park, but as of yet, I have not found a time that has been exactly mentioned. One other thing that I accidentally skipped over was that on October 16th, our competition cheer team will also be playing against Skyline High School at 6:00 PM. I didn't want to just brush over that, skip over it altogether. Again, for our Leo Club, I don't have much information on that, but I know that they will be continuing with their past projects and trying to make this year as good as they can. As for our National Artist Society, our next meeting is tomorrow. In fact, during flex, one of the times we could actually find something, yay! And we have projects lined up along the board. One of them is our volunteering at the Rappahannock County Elementary School Pumpkin Patch, which will be this Thursday, October 16th. And our NHS members will get to volunteer for either the morning shift, afternoon shift or the entire day if they wish to do so, to go over and help the sixth graders with our Pumpkin Patch activity, which if I was informed correctly, was about financial literacy and learning how they can better manage their money and related things like that. For us, sorry. Other things that we have coming up will be our coffee cart on Tuesday, October 28th, that we bring out to staff every, every fourth, fourth Tuesday of the month during flex to give them a little cheer me up during the day. And volunteers can sign up for that as needed or if, sorry, or if Ms. Cooper just needs to ask someone, hey, can you do it? People will usually be okay with it. We also have our Rappahannock County Elementary School trunk retreat on Friday, October 31st, which we will be helping at for, we will be helping at and volunteers will be going to. So that'll be another thing that we can do to engage with our community and we're all looking forward to that very much. As for our Profile of Graduate Team, Virginia College Application Week is next week, October 20th through 24th. Since our college advisor, Ms. Wiggins, is an, I believe, advise, is with the organization, advise Virginia, she was able to organize an event where for the entire week, from the 20th to the 24th, students are able to get fee waivers to apply to schools of their choice in Virginia and some participating out-of-state schools without having to pay set fee for the application. And those applications, I hear from experience, are very expensive. Some of them cost $50, $75, $80. So free week is a very good time for students at Rappahannock County High School to be able to save hundreds of dollars in their college applications, which we're all very excited for.
Don't procrastinate.
That's very true, very true. And in other news that I can't quite fit into any specific category, on October 17th, we have our Start with Hello event, which is an anti-bullying campaign for more kindness and inclusion in our community. Our peer mentors here at the high school will be going to the elementary school and having, and having lunch with the younger kids, talking to them, making sure that, hey, is everything okay? If you need to talk to someone, here are your resources, et cetera. And we're, and our peer mentors are very excited for that. I've talked to some personally who've been like, yeah, I'm really excited to go back to elementary school again, especially because some of them have, have, sorry, especially because some of them know the elementary school is in some other way, whether it be from friends, from people in the Future Educators Academy or just their community overall. On October 22nd, Rappahannock County High School will be participating in Unity Day, so everyone will be wearing orange for a unified plan. And so we are very much looking forward to that. On October 23rd, we have our Underclassmen Photo Day, where I believe eighth, ninth, 10th and 11th graders can get their pictures taken for the year, for the yearbook. And if they're not able to do so on that date, I believe another makeup date will be provided within the near future. Something else that was on the list was that our voter registration was originally supposed to be today. Ms. Pond and Mr. Day, our DE government teacher and just government teacher in general, was able to have the voter registrar come to Rappahannock County High School and get students who were interested to register to vote, as well as have a deep critical discussion about civic duty, voting, I guess, requirements, voter requirement and some back and forth dialogue on who should be allowed to vote, who should be involved in the community, et cetera. So things like that that really get our students ready to go into the real world as young adults and be productive members of society. Our Trades Academy for next semester, on another hand, has also been confirmed and will be offering HVAC or plumbing, sorry, HVAC or plumbing programs, which I believe will start in the spring. Applications are already open for our seniors. Another thing related to applications, our Future Educators Academy is also having applications submitted now. So for students that are interested in getting college, getting college classes done, getting a degree, coming back to Rappahannock County High School to teach for a while, there is a program specifically designed for that, that they are able to apply to and if they get in, pursue. In other news, our senior trip has also been confirmed with first deposits being received just a few days ago. Our senior class in, I believe, the second week of March, perhaps the third, will be going on a Caribbean cruise, which students are very much looking forward to. So that is, the senior trip is a go, preparations are already underway and people who have elected to go have put in their deposits and secured their spots. And the last thing that I have underneath my other category is the Class of 20, the Class of 203 Fall Goods Fundraiser, which will be an opportunity for them to sell fall-related, maybe Halloween-related items to raise some money for their class and give them the opportunity to, you know, maybe later, go on trips just like the seniors have, but just a little bit later. However, I do have one other thing to mention and it is something that a lot of students have been thinking about. Recently, on September 29th, our students were informed mainly by way of parent email that certain dual enrollment courses would have changes made to them. This came with a lot of confusion, for lack of a better word, amongst the seniors and for other students, juniors or maybe even sophomores, who were taking DE classes and now have found their plans a little bit changed because of that. From the email, this is some information that I have gathered and why students are confused. Some of them are a bit angry, some of them are just trying to figure out what is going on. From the email that was sent out on September 29th, people have gathered that we have dual enrollment classes offered here at the high school for students to further their education, save some money while doing it and also pursue their personal goals if they want to. However, we recently learned on September 29th that only no-cost agreement, or that is dual enrollment costs, dual enrollment classes within this no-cost agreement that are offered through the school's partnership with Laurel Ridge Community College will be counted toward GPA and class rank. This does include all of our in-house classes that are taught by qualified instructors at Rappahannock County High School and select online courses that students were able to take. However, in what, sorry, dual enrollment courses that were not part of those specific categories would not count towards students' class rank and GPA, which as many students pointed out, is a very critical factor, especially in the fact that college admissions are coming up. Many students were irritated because this decision was made and communicated to parents most notably after the ad drop in withdrawal deadlines. What this means is that colleges have a certain deadline for when students can add new courses, drop new courses or withdraw from courses, which is somewhere you're dropping, but it'll appear on your transcript. This decision was communicated to the parents of the students, who then told the students, after all of these deadlines, which essentially led students unable to change their schedules or withdraw, even if they really would have chosen, oh, I would have liked to have taken that other class. Some students said that, some students said, hey, we really didn't know about this beforehand. If we had known at the beginning of the year or if people had told us about this, we would have been able to make better informed decisions, but unfortunately, that didn't happen. As of right now, a lot of students are saying that no motive has really been given for this, especially not for the fact that the rules of dual enrollment classes were changed in the middle of the year. To some, it very much seems like a retroactive rule change or for lack of a better word, like an exodus factor will change, which for lack of a better description, is that applying new GPA and class rank rules to students who already committed to courses months earlier in the spring or even early summer are now being, are now being limited in a certain way from having their goals truly met. Another thing that students brought up as a concern multiple times was that there seemed to be unfortunately, quite a lack of communication. Like I said, students were left uninformed and some students said that even after talking with their counselors, such as college admissions advisors or guidance counselors, those adults had also let them know that they weren't even truly informed until the students had told, had told them, which prevented pretty much any planning or appeal for, hey, can this be changed? And like I said earlier, this is going to have a very negative impact on students' academic and college goals. GPA and class rank heavily influence scholarships, honors programs and college admissions, especially in highly competitive regions like former Virginia, which we are in. When we compare Rappahannock County High School and the Rappahannock County School, Rappahannock County School District with others in our area, such as Winchester, Culpeper, let's see, Alexandria, Fairfax Loudon, Arlington, those students have many more, have much more access to resources and opportunities, not just by way of the fact that they're a larger school, but also because they, sorry, not just by way of the fact that they're a larger school, but also by way of the fact that they have more people that are able to help them with this. So with this now said, student transcripts may misrepresent student rigor by excluding real college-level work from their GPA and class rank, which can make their transcripts appear weaker than they actually are. Something that also caused confusion in students was that as far as people know, AP, that is Advanced Placement Classes, have not yet been affected, but DE classes, which are subject to the same standards and the same rigor, are being affected, which is something that, sorry, something that many students have brought up concern about. In fact, I was able to basically compile a list of various things that students have said and it's a bit too long for me to summarize in total here, but if I may, can I leave behind some copies of this? You see, thank you. So this one is Bynum right here. All right, and I've just got one or two more things I want to say on that subject. One thing that students have suggested as for maybe requests and solutions for this is that the current seniors, juniors and even sophomores that were affected be grandfathered into, be grandfathered in under the old rules so that they are not affected by the change that was made after they had signed contracts, after they had made their schedules, after they had been in front of old rules. Students are asking that either the policy be dropped entirely or that they be accepted, given that they made their decisions based on something that they did not know would change later. In addition, other students have suggested only applying these policies to new future classes, with, sorry, applying new policies only to future classes and having these announced before course registration with full, sorry, with full transparency to students, parents and staff. As many are still yet being felt, sorry, many are still yet feeling like they've been left in the dark as to what is actually going on. Some students are asking, where did this decision originate? When did it happen? Why, why was this brought up into consideration and especially why now? So I would like to leave that here as an, as a matter of, yes, there are some things that our students would like to see changed and if I could have your help in this, then that would be very much appreciated for all of our students who are currently affected. Are there any questions about that? I know I kind of just provided you with a lot of information in a very short timeframe.
There's a lot, I'm exhausted. I had them that in high school in October. There's a lot going on. Yeah, it's been a busy time. Thanks Ruth. Any questions Ruth tonight?
Were you able to submit that VSBA scholarship?
I was, thank you, yes.
She'll be in the running for that, so we'll find out if you might be able to join us in Williamsburg in the-
On the government 19th, yeah.
That would be wonderful.
I'm very much looking forward to that.
We will talk about this too.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any other questions, I will take my leave. Is that all?
All right.
Thank you Ruth.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right. Donations this evening include a total of $14,639. Premium home supplies, $2,500 for office furniture, desk chairs and supplies. And that Rappahannock County PTO, goodness sakes, $12,139 for the courtyard project. An amazing group that is, so I will accept those during our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from September 9th?
No movement.
I have a motion, Mr. Groves, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. McCool, any, any comment? All favor aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed no? It's ordered. Mr. Groves, do you have a chance to review the bills?
I did and we're running at about 31%, and that's about where we should be.
Thanks. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No movement.
Have a motion, Mr. Groves, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. McCool, all in favor aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed no? It's ordered Dr. Groves' line.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. The first report of the superintendent is actually a report from Ms. Crystal Smith, so I'm going to ask her to come to the podium to share our accreditation report.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to share some news from the state.
Make sure you're using that microphone nice now, there we go.
Is that better?
That's better.
All right.
Back quote.
Okay, you can, are you, who's doing? Under the previous accreditation system, Virginia schools were rated on several school quality indicators, including academic achievement, achievement gaps, attendance and graduation rates. Each indicator had a performance level, was given a one, two or three, and these were combined into the overall accreditation status, such as accredited or accredited with conditions. And the slide that you see here, this is the information that was reported to you last year regarding the elementary and the high school both being fully accredited. As you know, there's a, a new system in town from the state, so that's what we're going to go on to talk about tonight. Virginia's new school performance and support frameworks separates accreditation and accountability in an effort to provide a clearer picture of school performance. On the right side of the slide, you see Virginia's accreditation model. Simply put, accreditation focuses on the inputs such as the student's resources and it emphasizes compliance, whereas on the left side, the accountability focuses on the output of school, so student performance and growth and readiness, and it aims to support the now what part of it. Under the system, schools are rated into four categories, as you see there in the middle, distinguished, on track, off track and needs intensive support. These are based on the measures of mastery, growth, readiness and graduation. All schools in Virginia under the new model will have three different classifications. They will have a framework score, a performance category and accreditation designation. And that's, this is the part that we're going to walk through tonight. This new framework is based on a weighted index, where each indicator is assigned a weight based on the school model. The state has several different models depending on what grades are in the schools. So our elementary school is on the elementary model since we are K-7. In this model, mastery makes up 65% of our score, while growth is 25 and readiness is 10. RCHS is on the middle-high combined model due to the fact that our eighth grade is in with our high school. With this model, mastery makes up 50%, growth is 10, graduation is 10 and readiness is 30. is ten, and readiness is thirty. Here you can see how the points are earned for each of the indicators. Students will earn from zero to one point two five points based on performance, and we'll talk about each of these a little more, um, as we go through the scores for each school and the indicators, but you can see, um, how students rack up points in each of those, um, indicators there. Performance categories, these points from each indicator are totaled to give each school a performance category. Schools earning ninety or greater points are distinguished, indicating they are exceeding the state's expectations for achievement, growth, graduation, and readiness. Schools earning eighty to eighty-nine points will be labeled on track, indicating that they are meeting the state's expectations. Schools earning sixty-five to seventy-nine points are off track, and schools below sixty-five need intensive support. So let's take a look at our schools, um, and see what our preliminary, um, numbers are looking like. We'll start with our CES first. This table shows how mastery was measured and the points we earned within this indicator. The first four columns, you'll see the numbers of the points earned for each performance level in reading, math, and science. Advanced scores received one point two five points, um, per test, proficient, one point per test, and basic or below basic earning point two five. These points are combined in the mastery points earned column, that's the four from the left there, from the right, excuse me, then divided by the number of students and multiplied by a hundred to get the percent of possible points. So in this example of the first row, our CES received eighty-nine point four or five points out of a possible one hundred for reading mastery. The indicator score is calculated by multiplying the percent of possible points in the indicator weight, which in this case is twenty-two point five, you see there on the far, um, left under reading, um, giving RCS, RCES a score of twenty point one two for the reading. EL progress on the Access for Ls test is part of the mastery indicator as well, however, there is a minimum of fifteen students, and we did not meet that. We only had twelve students test, so we did not receive any points for L progress. By totaling all the scores in the indicator column on the far right, you can see that RCES picked up fifty point five points for mastery, which is great. The next indicator is growth. Here you can see how RCES earned points for growth in reading and math. Growth is calculated using Virginia's visuali- visualization and analytic solution, another acronym, Vvos. Um, Vvos use students' past test history, uh, to predict how they should do on, how they should do on the state's assessments. Based on these projections, students could earn one point two five points by exceeding the expected growth, one point for expected growth, point five below, and point two five if they did not, um, meet growth. DoE did not renew the contract with Vvos, so this data platform is no longer available, uh, for schools and will not be used for the current school. So this is kind of like a one-and-done kind of thing for the year. Unfortunately, we do not yet know, um, or have explicit directions on how growth is gonna be calculated, um, for this year, um, perhaps a, a growth chart or a table like we've seen in the past, we, we don't know. So the information that we do right, know right now is that RCES earned twenty-five point four two points in the growth indicator based on the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. For readiness, at the elementary school level, only chronic absenteeism is used to measure readiness, and RCES earned eighty-four point six six points out of a hundred to get eight point four six for the framework score. Moving on to RCHS, the mastery indicator is similar to the RCES calculations with only percentage values being different. You can see there on the far, um, left, for the middle and high school combined model, reading and math are fifteen percent, science ten, and EL progress ten. Again, our EL testing number was below fifteen, so we did not receive any points there, but we did pick up a great number of points for reading, math, and science. Reading and science both received about ninety-three out of possible one hundred. Math received a hundred and twenty point two nine points out of a hundred. This is because, um, some students could have taken more than one math test. For example, students on the advanced track may have taken an eighth-grade math test and the algebra test, so it's possible to get more than one hundred points in this indicator. Overall, RCHS earned forty-one point three nine points in the mastery indicator. Again, growth was measured with Vvos, um, and they picked up nine point six six points towards the grand total. Again, that's, we don't know a lot about how they got that number, or, uh, they didn't give us much on how to check that, um, since that platform's no longer there, but we'll take the nine point six six points. The next is the readiness indicator. Middle and the high school combined model is a little bit more complex for the readiness. Chronic absenteeism is fifteen percent, advanced math coursework is five, employment, enrollment, and enlistment readiness is fifteen percent, and the six-year graduation rate is five percent. The second column from the right shows the points out of a hundred that each measure received. Again, you'll notice that the three E is greater than a hundred because students could have picked up points in more than one of the categories of enrollment, enlistment, um, the ASVAB scores, or their employ- employment, um, plans. Overall, RCHS picked up thirty-two point nine six points in readiness. The graduation indicator, this is based on the four-year federal graduation rate, and they got ninety-two point one five out of one hundred possible. So what does all this mean? As we learned earlier, um, all schools will receive a framework score, a performance category, and an accreditation rating. By totaling the indicator scores for mastery, growth, readiness, and graduation, RCES and RCHS came up with eighty-four point three eight and ninety-three point three six points. This means that RCES has met the expectations and is on track, and RCHS has received the distinguished status by scoring over ninety points, which means they are exceeding the state's expectations for achievement, growth, graduation, and readiness. So I'm happy to report that both schools, as you'll see there on the, the right, are expected, um, to be fully accredited, um, which highlights the hard work of our teachers and our students and dedication of our amazing staff.
With a lot of moving, changing parts, well, this was all, so thank you, Crystal, so much for capturing all that data in, in this way and the calculations. I know we kept checking and checking even this morning and making sure.
Yes, they were different just about every day.
Is this final?
It appears to be the last iteration, however, DOE still has not released it publicly. They're running behind. Um, you will see it on the School Quality Profiles website, and when you go there at this point, are the assessment pass rate data is there, but the performance framework data is not there, but it has like a coming shortly soon thing on the, on the side.
You couldn't, you couldn't put this in the paper right now.
No, I mean, this is, this is the data, so, um.
Yeah, the, yeah. Things were changing, um, quite a bit last week. Some, some of the, um, updates in the mornings, we had no idea why they changed. They kept getting better, and we were okay with that, um, but they said that Friday was the, the deadline for not being able to make any more changes to data, um, so I, we are thinking that this is, these are the numbers, um, although they haven't officially, like, posted, but, yeah.
When do you think that'll happen?
Well, they were supposed to already have done that, so.
Any second now. Anytime now, but no, this is official, um, data as far as we have it verified with the, the state, um, as early as this morning, so we don't anticipate it changing at all, um, especially in a downward trajectory, so that's, so it's been going, oh, yes, as they adjusted.
Yes, very little, just a point here or there, but, um, yes, so, thank you for that opportunity to share.
And then next year, Crystal, you'll be learning an entire new framework and equations.
Probably, probably so. This one, it, it makes sense now, but in, in the beginning, this was pretty, yeah, we were not sure how this was gonna go and how it was gonna look, but, um, we're very happy with, with the status of both schools, and I, I don't think you're, we'll see a lot of distinguished schools across the state, so, um, I'm very proud of our teachers and students, so thank you for your support, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What was it, first calculator, the TI sixty?
TI sixty, yeah. Get it, that's less. All right, our next presentation, I'm going to ask Dr. Lil Barton and Mrs. Jody Place to come to the podium to update the board on the Continuous School Improvement Plans, and I know Dr. Boyne would love to be here, an urgent family matter had to bring around with the country right now, but she'll be back soon, but she's, oh, yeah, awesome. All right, Dr. Lil Barton, what are yours?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Grimsley. Um, we're here to present the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Continuous School Improvement Plan. Uh, Dr. Lil Barton, the proud principal of Rappahannock County Elementary School, and I am joined by Mrs. Jody Place, Assistant Principal at Rappahannock County High School. Tonight, we'll share how both schools are continuing to build on our strong instructional foundations while ensuring that every student, big or small, thrives academically, socially, and emotionally. So, um, at RCES, our overarching goal remains very simple but very powerful. Um, one hundred percent of RCES students will engage in rigorous, relevant, and meaningful learning experiences across all content areas. This year, we're looking to foster engagement and excellence as a response to the REACH survey results, um, that were conducted last year, and our theme is making ripples, small changes to make big impacts. We want students, uh, not only to master skills, but to love learning and see themselves as capable, confident, twenty-first century learners. The first strand is teaching for learning in the ELA or English Language Arts. The goal we have here is that all students will achieve a year's worth of growth in reading with an intentional focus on students with disabilities and increasing that active engagement in literacy instruction. The first action step of this goal is that eighty percent of pre-K through third grade students will meet the VOWS Spring Benchmark Assessment, and VOWS is that Universal Literacy Springer. In pre-K, students will participate in the Hegarty-Funnamic guidance routines, bless you, and daily whole group and guided reading lessons, and those, um, teachers will collaborate in monthly CLT meetings, which is our collaborative learning team meetings, um, to align instruction and share progress. In kindergarten through third grade, uh, teachers will implement Hegarty, Orton-Gillingham, and Bookworms, which is our reading program, um, to build strong foundational reading skills for shared reading, differentiation, and progress monitoring, um, in AIMS Web with consistent collaboration and feedback during walkthroughs and our monthly CLT meetings. Um, evidence of progress will occur through our VOWS assessments, um, formative and summative assessments in the classroom, bi-weekly progress monitoring in AIMS Web and walkthroughs, as well as for third grade, the, um, Spring, um, SOL. The next action step is that, um, eighty percent of third through seventh grade students will pass the Spring Reading SOL. Um, we have, uh, Bookworm reading instruction, um, in the third through fifth grade range, and Mirrors and Windows in sixth and seventh, that's our curriculum, and, um, we have an emphasis on shared reading and differentiation, um, again, our AIMS Web, progress monitoring, and Lexia. Um, that evidence of progress will occur through our, um, oral reading fluency, um, benchmarks in the fall, winter, and spring, and student growth assessments, benchmarks, and engagement walkthroughs, and obviously those SOL scores. And then finally, um, the final action step in the area of ELA is that eighty percent of students with disabilities will demonstrate measurable growth in oral reading fluency as evidenced by improvement on the AIMS Web Words Per Minute Benchmark, so there'll be movement from the high-risk bands to the some-risk bands or growth within those current bands, and again, um, lots of changes, so they've kind of changed their measurements too, so that's why it's kind of a broad statement. In, um, pre-K through seventh grade, we will implement aligned research-based instruction, strengthen those early literacy foundations, differentiate and intervene early, um, which we're already doing, and collaborate for instructional alignment, um, and then we're just continuously using that data for improvement. Um, again, that evidence of progress is gonna be those AIMS Web, um, Fall, Winter, and Spring Benchmark results, um, Bookworms, and Mirrors and Windows assessments, um, data from small group rosters, teacher feedback, um, and those classroom assessments. Um, to round out, this is important, um, because literacy is the foundation for everything our students do, and we're prioritizing that early intervention, consistent routines and alignment across grade levels, uh, we wanna close those gaps, accelerate growth, and then, um, we're really guided by the Virginia Literacy Act, um, so the changing metrics for the SOL pass rates and school accreditation, we're just really committed to ensuring that, um, the rigor is still really high, um, and that every student is gonna receive that rigorous, high-quality instruction, um, for confidence, mastery, and a lifelong love of reading. Moving on to math, um, our smart goal here is that all RCES students will demonstrate measurable growth in mathematical fluency and number sense, um, and that's gonna be evidenced by benchmark and classroom assessments. We'll have a targeted focus on increasing the pass rates of students with disabilities, while simultaneously providing those enrichment opportunities for advanced learners. So, um, again, we have some essential actions and action steps. First, eighty percent of pre-K and kindergarten students will meet or exceed their VKRP benchmark, demonstrating, um, proficiency in number sense, counting, and early operations. Um, in pre-K and kindergarten, we will analyze that full data, look at our daily practice, monitor if it just is needed, um, and strengthen our consistency, and then evidence of progress will be measured by those assessment results, um, progress reports, and teacher observation, and then in kindergarten only, we're gonna be looking at AIMS Web, um, progress monitoring. The second place is that, um, I'm sorry, the second step is that eighty percent of, um, students will pass the math SOL. Additionally, the path, pass rate for students with disabilities will hopefully increase by ten percentage points, reflecting that targeted support in mathematical fluency, number sense, and problem solving. In third through seventh grade, um, math space, which is our new curriculum, will be implemented, daily instruction differentiated, um, using data to drive our instruction from, um, our assessment, our formative and summative assessments, and then our CLT meetings, um, we'll be looking at student growth assessments, unit assessments, benchmarks, and Spring SOL data. And then third, eighty percent of first and second grade students will score at or above twenty-one percent, twenty-five percent, which is our tier one, as measured by AIMS Web data in the spring of twenty-twenty-five. In first and second grade, daily math and fluency practice, um, differentiate instruction during resource, monitor growth, and reinforce skills, um, and we'll be measuring that, um, by classroom observations, AIMS Web, and quarterly grade level assessments. So, um, our goal is not just proficiency, it's confidence, so with the, again, those changing SOL metrics and accreditation standards, we're trying to ensure that every student demonstrates that measurable growth in mathematical understanding, fluency, and problem solving. And then moving on to school environment, um, so the first, um, well, the second strand, um, but the first part of the second strand is gonna be staff well-being, so, um, our goal is that staff will engage in opportunities that promote connection, self-care, and professionalism. We know that supporting our teachers directly impacts our student success, overall job satisfaction, and improved teacher retention rates, so something that we do already, that Ms. Wissinger started, was bi-weekly staff check-ins, um, and that's just a way for, um, open communicate, communication between, um, administration and staff, just to offer support, um, in areas, in really any areas. Um, the second please is going to be, um, committed to be fit partnerships, so that's, that schedule's kind of been revamped, um, there's a lot of opportunities for, um, staff and faculty to work together as a team and improve their overall fitness, um, so again, just kind of, you know, bringing, bringing some enthusiasm, um, back, back into the workplace and some friendly competition as well. Um, and then finally, we have our monthly ripple awards, so as I said, we are, theme is making ripples, um, so we have our ripple awards that celebrate staff who go above and beyond, um, who create ripples and impact in their work. And then moving into student culture, so, um, RCS will improve the school culture for all students by enhancing a positive academic and social-emotional learning-focused culture by maintaining high expectations and providing that support of those high expectations. Um, we're gonna continue our Junior Panther of the Month recognition, which is selected by, um, homeroom teachers that follow, you know, schools, students who are following school rules and just impacting the school in a positive way. Peer mentors will also continue, which is a program led by Michelle Griffith, that can, our school counselor, um, that connects older students with, um, younger students to provide that guidance, academic support, and positive friendship, um, and that's gonna, you know, foster leadership, um, empathy, and a stronger connection to the school community. And then, uh, finally, we'll do those family engagement nights, um, so we already had one so far, we had that, that great, um, back-to-school night event, which was just, um, just unbelievable and, and beyond my wildest dreams, um, and we have Grinchmas planned again, so that will be happening in December, and then a spring engagement event. Um, and again, we're just trying to strengthen those connections. And again, we're just trying to strengthen those connections between students, parents, and staff. And then finally, we just, we create ripples of impact through our rigorous instruction and a compassionate culture. And now I'm excited to transition to our secondary team as we continue bridging the journey from RCES to RCHS. And I'd like to introduce Jamie, please.
Can I bring with me?
Oh, Dr. B.
There she is. Hello. Hello. Don't let an ocean fool ya. She's here. Okay. So we are, we are excited to be here tonight to talk about our Continuous School Improvement Plan. So this is our overarching goal, and essentially, you know, our division-wide emphasis this year is on increasing student engagement and everything, and our Continuous School Improvement Plan connects to that goal, helping students not just to attend class, but to feel connected and challenged and inspired to learn, and to maintain our distinguished status, of course. We are very excited about that. So hopefully, you'll see the thread that every part of our, part of our plan centers on one purpose, to help our students grow academically, socially, and emotionally while preparing for life beyond high school. So similar to the elementary school in strand one, our Teaching for Learning. Our first major goal is academic growth, that by the end of our year, that 75% of our students will reach mastery across all of our content areas, not just focusing on those core content areas. So we want to build capacity and consistency in Tier 1 instruction, and we're going to do that by aligning practices with the inspired teaching, the A, B, C, D, E of learner needs. So that is something that we are really, really committed to, focusing it all, again, building capacity and learning about so that we can implement it. With the division-wide focus on engagement, this will be reflected in our new walkthrough tool that we are creating with coordination with our staff through our building leadership teams and working within our departments, which will help us track evidence of active learning, differentiation, and ways that we're reteaching when students demonstrate that that's what they need. And the goal is to make engagement really visible and intentional in every classroom every day. Oh, sorry. In terms of also for our Teaching for Learning, we want to increase engagement in individualized learning. We are using a program called Journalify, which is a digital progress monitoring tool for special education and 504 students, so looking at this subgroup specifically. And our goal is for 100% of our special education teachers and assistants to use this program to help track growth and guide instruction. By being able to access very efficiently that data, we think we can make really informed and appropriate decisions. So staff is training and participating in ongoing coaching to ensure that Journalify data drives our instructional adjustments and supports our meaningful progress conversations with our families, so that when we have meetings and times with them, we can really individualize our conversations. This keeps our focus, again, on engagement through our responsiveness and being very personalized, and meeting students where they are, and then adapting instruction in real time. In our next Teaching for Learning, we have, and looking at a huge part of engagement is our students seeing relevance in what they're learning. So in this particular SMART goal, we want to increase our high-quality work-based learning participation by at least 10% this year. So we are going to do that by strengthening partnerships with local businesses and aligning our work-based learning with our course competencies and ensuring opportunities are equitable across our programs. We are going to be having quarterly CTE Advisory Committee meetings. We started that last year. And so we want to be able to make sure that we're connecting instruction to the workforce needs that we have and ensure that our students leave Rapid Hennett County High School prepared and motivated for what comes next, and hopefully, ready to serve this very community. In order for us to best serve students, we want to make sure they are here. So another key area is focusing on attendance and working to reduce our chronic absenteeism rate by 10%. We built an MTSS framework for attendance, and that integrates mentoring, family communication, and SEL-based supports. Students with attendance challenges can participate in small groups focused on identifying what are the barriers and obstacles that might be contributing to their attendance, and also building some resilience and helping them create connections and community here at school and strong relationships with those around them. We feel that when students feel engaged and supported and seen that they show up, then that's kind of the heartbeat of the work that we do. Okay. In terms of staff morale, we are really excited that this year we're designing an applied educational neuroscience MTSS for adults model. We're actually piloting that. This is a continuation of our opening keynote with Dr. Lori Desatell and the work that she's doing. Our staff was really excited, gave amazing feedback about that experience, and we've already kind of started creating a group so that we can continue that work and focus on staff regulation, connection, and professional resilience. The division-wide emphasis, again, on engagement just doesn't apply to our students. It also should start with our adults. So the Tier 2 pilot team that we have developed is being trained this year to build a foundational understanding, test strategies like regulation stations, reflection circles, so that we can then take this forward to implement school-wide next year across our entire building. So we're building, again, that collective capacity so that we have sort of ambassadors, if you will, that can go out among us to work with one another. And then to close, our, there we are. Our, our partners. Yeah. Because we, it is a partnership with Rapid Hennett County Elementary School. We are one big family. So our CSIP is our roadmap for growth, and this year, it ties directly to our division focus of engagement. And every initiative from classroom instruction to staff well-being, it is designed to create the kind of school where students and teachers feel connected, capable, and inspired. So we are really proud of the progress in Jay and I that's happening at RCHS and grateful for the board's continued support in moving us forward on the road to remarkable. Would you like to add anything, MJ?
I would just like to say, great job, Jody.
Now, we also attached to Board Docs the actual Continuous School Improvement Plan documents that you will see there. And I just want to applaud the building leadership and the teachers and teams that put in all of that work and were very, very precise on those goals and action steps. It does take a, a good amount of master diagnostician work to get down to that granular level and develop action steps that are methodical in that, in such a way to achieve the results that you all have. So you should be very, very proud, and we're excited on the pathway that we are on this year.
You know, those, those, these very detailed spreadsheets that are in the other two attachments? They, this is not only a metric, but this is how they stay on top of things before they get out, before they spin out of control. So, so these are, there's a lot of details in these documents that weren't brief, but they're in our, on Board Docs. Very good detail.
Yeah, I like seeing the evidence of you working together. I think it's really admirable that you made the same presentation together, and that's different from what I've noticed at other similar presentations, so I applaud that. And I also was wondering about, I mean, for attendance, obviously, I'm, I'm, I'm having the cops under control right now, but, but, I mean, there, there is the reality of illness at school, and I'm wondering about how to make sure that we're not, like, over emphasizing attendance to the detriment of health of students. And, and, you know, there are, there are, I'm sure everybody has an example of soldiering through and then crashing, and the part of the health that we're trying to foster, I mean, mental health and physical health go hand in hand, and I, I, I would love to just really see some evidence that, Larry, I think at one point said, I don't, I don't ever, when you told the story when you were a principal and, you know, someone was, like, trying to drag himself to school so they could get the perfect attendance here, or things like that, and it just felt kind of cruel, I guess, and I can imagine that. Like, I just, I would love to see, I think it's, attendance is important, but we need to teach people sort of good self-care techniques.
That's a perfect point. That is something we brought up a lot at the superintendents' meetings as they were rolling out those metrics, right? Because it is one of those indicators that we really have no
No cold control.
Other than what we can do here at school, make it the best environment for students to want to come, show the correlation between attendance and achievement, all of those things that we know are, are right, but what we truly care about is mastery of the content and that you're able to, to get to where you need to go. So the state is offering
And get along with other people.
And get along with other people. That's always good. And so those, those metrics are important indicators, and the state is not backing down from attendance at all. In fact, they put a lot of emphasis into it in our, in our frameworks. So that is something we have to keep, we did get them to kind of chunk it into the readiness factor rather than its own standalone category, which is a plus. But for the student, we're more worried about the amount of time missed on, you know, and if you're chronically absent, right? We don't want you to come to school when you're sick. Please do hear us. We do not want you to come in and spread the germs everywhere. No, we do not. And we do want you to be well and healthy. But there are mechanisms to recoup attendance points and the attendance days for students and excuse those absences should they take advantage of certain extended school day tutoring services and those things where they can recoup that later. So that's some of, there is some limited flexibility, hopefully a little more coming, but that's an important point.
Yeah, yeah.
It's one of those things, yes. We don't have much influence, but
It needs to be done in good, good faith. I understand what you're saying about absenteeism, and that's, that can just be idle, like, coming. But the things to address, school, you know, school morale, and exciting to be in school is really to do that.
Well, it was interesting, too, the, the level of detail and the data that you all see just scratching the surface of this, and I thought it was really awesome. We've invited a, a parent to sit on our BTSS Virginia Tier System of Supports group as part of that work to see how you use the data and implement intervention strategies and how it all kind of works together. And she's been three meetings, two or three now? But such an eye-opening experience for her to see all of the inner workings of how, you know, the instruction gets from, you know, the curriculum to the student and how that achievement works, and then all of, all of the pieces that work into that. It's, it's a lot bigger of a job than I think people realize, and, and it takes all of us. And she saw the value of also, you know, how much we need the parents. We really need the parents. This is very hard work, and we, we do need to emphasize that importance of achievement and excellence and supporting each other and supporting the students and being on the same, same team and helping support each other and the students. But it's, it's a lot of work, and you do have a distinguished school and a non-track school, and you're not going to see a lot of that when they do release these data points. So, well done. Again, ladies, good job. Anything else on that item? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item is the VAST Salary HR Study. We had talked briefly about this in the past, and it did come up quite a bit, I think, in the budget hearings and in our discussions. So we did want to get ahead of this and talk about actually conducting an administrative internal controls, hiring, compensation, and practices review. Because we are participating in VAST as a Virginia Association of School Superintendents, we have access to some legal and consultation services at a heavily discounted price for, for items such as this. Now, the school board opted to do this back in 2014 under a previous superintendent, and that was a very large-scale review, of which that we still use a lot of the practices that were from, that were part of that study. We do want to make some, some shifts to bring added transparency, understanding career progression ladders, what the prerequisites are, what, just to, it would bring greater transparency to everyone about why support administrative roles, administration, executive leadership, what gets them there, why? Are they on that kind of a pay scale? What is the workload? And doing a overview of that in this, in a study and comparative analysis before we roll that out. So there is a proposal here. I did meet with the consultants and funny, the woman, one of the ladies on that team was the one that conducted the study in 2014, for you all. So she's kind of familiar with the work, and this one is a smaller scope scale. So the price is about half what it would be for the larger scale.
Which is still nine
Nine thousand dollars. Yeah.
That's not bad, actually.
No, for what this work would do and provide for you, that's a pretty decent amount, so.
And it gives it, it gives it a, a look from the outside.
Mm-hmm. It does.
Which
And it would be useful as we develop
And we haven't had one for 11 years, correct?
Yeah, it's about time.
Yeah, it's a sensitive period.
And our, our hope, so the discussion that led to this, our hope was that it would be another data item when we go into budget cycle that either justifies what we're asking for or shows that we're doing very well with what we already have. That's our intent, our intent is to see if it's good and show that. We think it will, but it's good to have this independent set of eyes looking at our district roles, responsibilities, pay.
And how they compare.
How it compares against requirements? And how maybe, does it, does it do a comparison against other districts?
It does. Same size schools with similar demographics, and also in our region, so that's your cluster competing. So they'll do an overview of all of that to see what compensation practices, hiring practices, recruitment that you're utilizing, do they mirror best practices for you where you are? So, I mean, it's, it is a great study if you, I can provide you, if you wanted to see the 2014 study, I can provide that to you as well, so you can kind of see where we left off.
That would be interesting.
It is interesting.
That would be very interesting.
And I remember, I was a part of that study as a different, in a very different role, so I saw kind of the process unfold, and it is very extensive and thorough.
And that's when we did all the different, our different scales.
Yeah, yeah. And those are the still, still the mechanisms in play.
The scales are still there.
Yeah, yeah, and the same mechanisms to trigger those. So that's, and we're trying to expand that even further to have six different levels from basic administrative support at entry level all the way up through executive leadership and to show very clearly what gets you to that next step and what the salary range is, where the prereqs, what do you need for credentialing degrees, all of that. So the employees, I think, would appreciate more of a clearer understanding of a career progression as well.
Knowing ahead of time, right?
Yes.
And this would require a motion?
A motion and a vote, please.
I shall move.
In part, we have a motion, Mr. Grove, to adopt the salary study. I have a second from Ms. McCool. More discussion?
I just wonder, what, what would it be if we wanted to do the full one? Would it be exactly twice that much?
Eighteen thousand.
And one of our objectives for the cheaper, what, so we were reluctant to take the money away from anything that would be related to students. So our hope was to get it low enough that we could find a grant source to cover it. That's our hope.
But it's low enough where you could pull it from some of the board services, legal and other consulting contracted service lines, that we could fit it in. It's low enough. And I think I can also use some Title II. I'm sure I can use some Title II. I would like not to use all of it for the whole 9,000 if I can find other sources, but I have Title II federal funding that can be used for this.
VAST is a known quantity, too. I mean, you go to a consultant outside, you really don't have a known quantity except for you have to research previous work they've done.
But it is a very good point. But if the community, for example, wanted something more in-depth, we're doing it on the cheap because it wasn't in our budget to execute.
I was just kind of wondering if, I'm sorry for interrupting.
It just seems to me like if the community wanted it to be more in-depth, then they need to get the supervisors to kick in the funds to do a more in-depth need to get the supervisors to kick in the funds to do a more in-depth study. That would be the appropriate way of doing it, right?
Yeah.
Because we're running out of, we need to get the thing kicked off.
Yes, because we need to start conducting it this month, by the end of the month and hopefully have it done before February, so we have the budget developed.
If it's not done before February, it loses its impact.
And it's not just to say we couldn't do another one next year on a different set of parameters.
Oh, no, that's a really good point.
So we could do, this is the focus right now because that was the area we're going anyway for, and some of the feedback we heard. The first study did a lot of, an overview of all your scales, set the parameters, and we've done a lot of work with your teacher scale, which is the bulk of your workforce. So that's had a lot of work done to it and benchmarking to the median based on that framework already. So I don't know how much more you're going to study in that framework than we've, you know.
I just sort of wanted to just get at the question you were just saying.
That's a good point.
If the supervisors decided very soon that they wanted to go for the whole, the full study, the cost would be nine thousand more and they could contact you about that and give you, give us the money for that.
That would be, that would be good if they were still able to stick to this timeline for this piece of it, because we needed to have impact in the coming budget cycle to say, you know, we are being faithful custodians of what we're given and here's some data to back that up. And so that's really, to me, the critical, the timeline is critical. I'm glad we're going to be able to kick it off soon, but it would be nice to see, you know, are they interested in more and maybe we just continue it next year.
Next year we could do, we could do pieces of it and when you see, I think, the depth of information they provide in their report, you'll be pretty impressed. It is really good. And so we can start here and then see where, will the board, of course, but since that was a focus of a lot of the feedback that we received, that's the focus of the study, too.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion? On the favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Sort of.
Item 4.4 is the annual CIPPA policy review where public reading has to take place. I will not read it to you, but I-
We have to read it in public for reading right now?
You're reading it?
I'm reading it.
Yeah. So public acknowledgement that you've read it and it is available on Board Docs for your meeting leisure anytime, yes. And that concludes the reports of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on, reports from our headwaters representative.
I'm going to ask Ms. McCool if she could-
Read it for you.
Just because I'm recording, it's going to sound worse than what it was.
Microscopic, right.
Yeah, well, you can, you can read it.
That would be helpful. All right, now you've done it.
You can summarize.
Headwaters' report to school of being, the Headwaters' Master Mash Fund Run Dash had a very successful first year. Over eighty people pre-registered and more than a hundred participated. Classes of 2027 and 2030 had tables selling baked goods, Halloween accessories, we commit to be fit, bunch was represented with a tent promoting fitness and health, several awards and door prizes were given, a great time is had by all. Headwater thanks our board of directors, the school board members, and the board of supervisors members who participated and supported our event. We're excited to make this the annual event. Headwaters' Screen of the Green Event will take place this Saturday, October 18th. The rain date is Saturday, October 25th. They're showing cocoa. The location is the high school practice field. Arrival time is 7:30 and the movie starts at 8:00. Admission is free, concessions will be sold. Please bring a blanket or lawn chairs to get cozy and enjoy the time with family and friends. All are invited. The after-school initial program ASAP. Children participated in the crunch for around the Commonwealth on Wednesday, October 8th with one day, up one day from the actual event to reflect the school closure for parent teacher conferences. The ASAP is officially registered with the Commonwealth as a designated site at RCES for the month of October. We're hoping to host Jason Morris, local farmer in Amisville, for a workshop to show the students, sell his giant fruits and vegetables and his growing process. We will be working with the new farm-to-table teacher Kyle Wenzel to prepare the pollinator garden with spring bulbs and to assist with the cleanup in the courtyard. Our annual ASAP pumpkin painting project, it's hard to say, with Rapid Home was a huge success. Students enjoyed apple cider, fall music while taking their time to create a special design for our local lucked-in Asian community members. Thank you Rapid Home and staff volunteers for providing us with the pumpkins and delivery. On Thursday, October 23rd, ASAP students will take a short field trip to Rapid County High School to watch the middle school Lady Panthers volleyball team play at their last home game of the season. And that's actually getting us a good chance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCool.
Moving on, MBGS.
Thursday.
Yeah, we met.
We did.
And we basically talked a little bit about our quota of kids and we were able to reduce ours from eight to six. We'd been paying for eight and we're sending anywhere from four to six, so we reduced our expenditure by two, which is, I would love to see us move up to eight again and that possibility is still there, but we don't, we're not spending money we don't need to spend. What else can we talk about?
There are at-large, that's-
Pardon?
There are at-large fights, if we went beyond that.
At-large are still available, too.
At-large are still available.
Okay.
And that's basically what we talked about.
Yeah, information will be coming out this week or next week about the summer residential governor's school programs and the governors of world foreign language academies that happen in the summer. Current sophomores and juniors would be eligible to apply for those, so you will be receiving some information about that very soon.
And Mel and Vista will be visiting here-
Yes.
Sometime soon. Most probably.
And then there's a meeting this Thursday as well. I can't either. I have a conflict, that's the first one I think I've missed.
Yeah, I think so.
But I'll get the notes from McDonald.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to information items, the bus purchase discussion is, could be old news by now, but there's, the bus, the bus gift that was given to us back when we were doing our budget cycle, things got complicated, I guess, I didn't know how complicated they were yet, but we were able to negotiate three buses used, lightly used?
Gently used.
Gently used. And then there was discussion about turning back on some of that, I think the inclination was that the money be used for the roof project or something was the initial motivation behind it, but anyway, this is an opportunity to become part of that discussion. Now, as of last Monday, the supervisors voted in majority against encouraging us to cancel a bus that was on our three, our three-bus deal. So it's not a-
Well, they would like us to cancel one of the new ones that they put forward, yes.
And give them back-
No, I say they wouldn't, sorry, that's not correct. The discussion was about canceling one of those.
The brand new one.
One of the brand new ones since with the purchase of three on our schedule, we would be five where we needed four, so one ahead. So it was tenable enough where I asked Mr. Mills that we just kind of discussed, I'd either put it to rest one way or another.
We know what we're talking about.
Well, I would think that you would, that the fact that we got three for the price of one, we would keep what we have and just basically say to the board of supervisors, we're not going to ask for any more for three more years and just say, you know?
At least one.
Huh? Or two years, whatever, whatever we just-
We built that bus into the budget to keep it there so that we don't get behind ever again.
Right.
And now we have to protect it.
Right.
And if we don't, we'll regret it.
Well, in two years, if you don't do something, you're going to be behind again.
Yeah.
I guess, I don't know what the other, what the backend is on, on the buses that are older, whether they're going to lose two at one time or lose-
No, and the good news is with the staggering of the three gently-used buses, it will help us stretch out the fleet a little bit better, so you're not looking at a five replacement schedule all at once.
Right.
No, you might some other times. So we did find out in the bus purchase question and answer that we've been compiling already starting our budget discussion for FY '27, questions and answers on the supervisors, the Rapid County Government Site under budget, that's the first one. So we are able, if the board chooses to call Sonny Merriman to cancel one of those buses without any penalty, one of the new ones, because it is still in production phase for ordering, you wouldn't get it till February. You could, it was asked at one of our meetings about, well, what about an ADA compliant bus, because that would likely be the next one to replace the blooper. That would cost about eleven thousand more than one of the, at this point in time, if you were to change that. We're also a little bit worried as the question said, you know, we do have an outstanding relationship with Sonny Merriman right now and they offered us that wonderful deal from Chesapeake and-
We're too bad to turn around.
Yeah, and I would hate to disincentivize them from finding us deals like that if they know every time they do that, we're going to cancel one of the new ones. That's bad business for them.
Yeah, I mean, they started being really, really good when we leased five buses, that was years ago.
They're fantastic, yeah, they are fantastic. So, I mean, but it's things to think about, things you worry about future, so big picture-wise, you know, this, it was three-two on the supervisors, there has been public comment about it already at their meetings, so you can anticipate some discussion about whether or not, again, the bus purchases were as necessary as they could be with the elementary roof costs coming up and of course, the courthouse project moving too. So just something to think about for-
Yeah, so the roof, the roof project is, I don't know the timeline of how that's going to roll, but you know, any given year, if we think we're ahead on our bus schedule and it's built into the budget, the board could always say, our intent for the bus money this year is to pay a portion of this roof project. We could do that next, next budget year.
And it would be allowable because it's infrastructure monetization.
So, so we could do that depending upon the timeline, the timeline matches up easily on what's our head.
Could you not proactively do that?
Well, it would have to be the next, that'd be the next budget cycle, because-
Proactively say that's what you're going to do to-
Well, and with the roof, remember, we did, in collaboration with county administration, we put in the VDEM grant. So we are waiting for that grant application, which funds fully the roof project with the caveat that there's a percentage match.
Right.
You're right, though, that the percentage match could probably be mostly met with that infrastructure money that you put aside for the bus, so I think you're okay that way as well. Just something to think about because it did come up, I wanted to make sure the board had a robust discussion about it because ultimately it is up to the school board. This body makes the decision as that money was appropriated for those buses and they're on order, we place the order as soon as it was appropriated, so.
Right.
I think it makes sense to keep, to keep, that's what we need.
We don't need to be shifting gears in the middle of our little bus here.
Up now.
All right.
Okay, we'll keep moving on, thank you.
All right, moving on, both of the comments there we'd like to address the board this evening. We've already taken care of our only action item, which was to approve the proposal for the research. Is there any new business this evening? I guess as far as what Ms. Colette shared with us today, we need to just do some strategizing or discussion about communications, reactions, how it is that we would respond so that, you know, the students and the parents have lost confidence if they have lost confidence. So that should probably be something that we take a look at.
Absolutely, no, it should be a board item and one that we've been thinking about proposing to you when we had all of the metrics worked out from all the changes that have been happening and it has been happening mainstream, they're not wrong about that.
So maybe it is a future board topic for us, like is it, is it something that we would be ready to discuss next month?
I think you should, probably, I think we're in a good place where you can discuss it then and we can make, we can give you an update on the timelines and what has happened and also in between now and then, the high school administration and I can talk about getting more information to be a little more transparent with the students if they're still confused about this, because it is, it's been kind of a whirlwind with the changes for the, with dual enrollment, the free courses through the new CGS pass and passport framework. So all those changes took place after all scheduling was done.
And the GPA impact and all of that.
Could we get the information before the meetings who have some knowledge to talk about?
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I'd be interested in the sort of bigger rationale between, you know, around the changes.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so that is a future agenda item, November target?
For sure, yes.
Good. Is there anything else on future agenda items, anybody? We do have a school board conference coming up, which the majority of us, I think, are attending on our newbie.
And then next week, there'll be a, it's not a forum, it's like a candidate, meet and greet.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's next, next Thursday, I think, at seven at the fire hall, in the Washington Fire Hall for all the four candidates running.
It's a discussion, I guess.
It's like a discussion, yeah, just like a meet and greet. Yeah.
Good.
See you then.
Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is November, the 11th at 6:30 in the same room. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
We do, I'm moving the board convening to closed session for the following purpose, discussing and consider the appointment and resignation of staff for professional classified positions pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
Motion, Mr. Grove, is our second. Second for Ms. McCool. On the favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? And sort of, we're going to be in this room for 10 minutes and we'll be back if you cares to wait.